Ladies and gentlemen, we're ready to begin this afternoon's board meeting. The school board meeting of May 19th, 2020 is now called to order. And the time is 3:16 PM. Following the recommendation of Governor DeSantis and the Florida Department of Education, this meeting will be held virtually, streamed live, and will be posted to the district YouTube channel upon completion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, seven items under academic services, three items under business services, three items under human resources, one item under information systems, eight items under operations, as well as one item under unfinished business tabled items, and one item under attorney recommendations. Also, four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Vote by Mrs. Morgan. Second, second by Mrs. Jordan. Please record your vote. Vote feature, can you please verbally show my affirmation? Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Also, Ms. Jevanelli, is she on?
Ms. Jevanelli, are you with us? No, she is not.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, here she is. Ms. Jevanelli, please record your vote. Ms. Jevanelli? And Susan, I just got up on it, so I did vote.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jevanelli, we're voting on the agenda. Can you record your vote, please?
Ms. Fisher, that passed 7-0.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mrs. Jevanelli will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Jordan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Jevanelli, please deliver the invocation at this time. Please unmute.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, the right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be reached a successful conclusion. Keep our students and families and the district healthy and safe. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America. One nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Today, we have no recognitions. Next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Puay Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operations of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, the chair will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comments are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding regarding the public comment will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern for Board Policy 1.11. The time per speaker is one minute. At this time, Madam Chair, I have 15 public comments, and I will also in-person live public comments, and I believe there will be more. And we also have numerous emails, so I will read with regards to virtual public comments. Pursuant pursuant to Executive Order 2069 in the Department of Education directives dated March 17th, 2020, notice was provided to the public that all public comment will be accepted virtually by email. Virtual submission of public comment was required to be sent to the email address publiccomment@leeschools.net at least two hours prior to this afternoon's meeting and are limited to 3,000 characters or 450 words to be consistent with Board Policy 1.11. Subsection 5A allotting, at that time, three minutes, but we will go to one minute because we're going to be over 30 speakers. No more than 60 emails from diff- no more than 60 individuals' emails or in-person will be allowed to address the school board during the public comment portion of the meeting. No more than one hour will be spent on public comments. The emails shall be read in the order that they were received. The board does not respond to public comment, and all of the rules that were enunciated previously are enunciated for the virtual public comments as well. At this time, we have still 15 public comments. And I think, Mr. Eldon, I'm gonna go to the boardroom so I can get the cards and make the announcements, and then the individuals can speak. So, Madam Chair, if I can have a minute to get to the boardroom so I can get the cards?
Yes. Let's take a two-minute basis, board members. The school board meeting of May 19th, 2020 is now called to order. And the time is 3:16 PM. Following the recommendation of Governor DeSantis and the Florida Department of Education, this meeting will be held virtually, streamed live, and will be posted to the district YouTube channel upon completion of the meeting. We would like to take this opportunity to remind the members of the public of the district's mission, which is to ensure that each student achieves his or her highest personal potential and of the district's vision to be a world-class school system. This afternoon's agenda includes the invocation, the Pledge of Allegiance, public comment, consent action items, which include one item under executive services, seven items under academic services, three items under business services, three items under human resources, one item under information systems, eight items under operations, as well as one item under unfinished business tabled items, and one item under attorney recommendations. Also, four items under other business. Board members, is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Vote by Mrs. Morgan. Second, second by Mrs. Jordan. Please record your vote.
I'm ready.
Vote feature, can you please verbally show my affirmation? Thank you. Ms. Johnson?
Thank you. Also, Ms. Jevanelli, is she on?
Ms. Jevanelli, are you with us? No, she is not.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, here she is. Ms. Jevanelli, please record your vote. Ms. Jevanelli? And Susan, I just got up on it, so I did vote.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Jevanelli, we're voting on the agenda. Can you record your vote, please?
Ms. Fisher, that passed 7-0.
Okay, motion carries, 7-0. Thank you, Ms. Johnson. Mrs. Jevanelli will deliver the invocation, after which Ms. Jordan will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ms. Jevanelli, please deliver the invocation at this time. Please unmute.
Please bow your heads. Lord, we are meeting today to conduct matters of business. Guide our hearts and our minds in the spirit of fairness, the right thought and speech. Impart your supreme wisdom upon our activities so that our affairs may be reached a successful conclusion. Keep our students and families and the district healthy and safe. Thank you for being our source of guidance today. Amen.
Thank you, Ms. Jevanelli. Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Constitution of America. One nation, your God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Today, we have no recognitions. Next on the agenda is public comment. Mr. Puay Bruno, please address the item of public comment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. School board policy provides the opportunity at this point in the meeting to address the board concerning any matter on this meeting's agenda or any other matter relevant to the operations of the school district. If you completed a card and submitted it before the meeting began, you will be called in the order of the card submitted. If you did not submit a card but still wish to address the board this evening, the chair will give you an opportunity in a moment to express that desire. The rules concerning comments are posted at the back of the room. The board does not respond during public comment time to remarks made by speakers. At the end of the public comment period, the board chair will address the assignment of any concerns or requests made during public comment to the superintendent. Speakers and those attending the meeting are expected to act in a respectful manner. Attacks on individuals or abusive comments are prohibited. In addition to clapping, booing, hissing are prohibited. Speakers who fail to follow rules regarding regarding the public comment will be ruled out of order. Any speaker continuing with such remarks will be required to relinquish the lectern for Board Policy 1.11. The time per speaker is one minute. At this time, Madam Chair, I have 15 public comments, and I will also in-person live public comments, and I believe there will be more. And we also have numerous emails, so I will read with regards to virtual public comments. Pursuant pursuant to Executive Order 2069 in the Department of Education directives dated March 17th, 2020, notice was provided to the public that all public comment will be accepted virtually by email. Virtual submission of public comment was required to be sent to the email address publiccomment@leeschools.net at least two hours prior to this afternoon's meeting and are limited to 3,000 characters or 450 words to be consistent with Board Policy 1.11. Subsection 5A allotting, at that time, three minutes, but we will go to one minute because we're going to be over 30 speakers. No more than 60 emails from diff- no more than 60 individuals' emails or in-person will be allowed to address the school board during the public comment portion of the meeting. No more than one hour will be spent on public comments. The emails shall be read in the order that they were received. The board does not respond to public comment, and all of the rules that were enunciated previously are enunciated for the virtual public comments as well. At this time, we have still 15 public comments. And I think, Mr. Eldon, I'm gonna go to the boardroom so I can get the cards and make the announcements, and then the individuals can speak. So, Madam Chair, if I can have a minute to get to the boardroom so I can get the cards?
Yes. Let's take a two-minute basis, board members. Thank you, Madam Chair. If you have your card in the basket, step forward and state your name.
My name is Haley Gutierrez. I would like the board to show me the policy on this type of situation. Better yet, show me the training that district employees have received for inactive shooters. Provide that in black and white, what the training was and when it was given. From my understanding, is this board does not typically get involved in personnel issues. To me and the over 49,000 people who've signed the petition supporting Vivian's reinstatement, if the board does not handle this issue, it is a cop-out. Because regardless of her being reinstated, this is about the policy, lack of policy, and the systematic failure to adequately protect the children of Lee County. This situation is simple. There's no training, no policy, no safety, and there should be no demotion. Reinstate Vivian Gutierrez and do a better job of protecting the children of Lee County. Thank you.
Next speaker, please make sure your card is in the basket and state your name.
My name is Mark Goodman. I'm here supporting Vivian Gutierrez. In a day and age where school shootings are on the rise, Vivian disarmed a student with a looted gun and averted another national tragedy. She should be hailed as a hero. She is an intelligent and quick-response administrator who acted in the most efficient way to protect the children in her charge. Please right this wrong. A review of all of these events would need a reasonable person to act exactly as Vivian did and not be viewed as a breach of policy, but an assistant principal demonstrating excellent critical thinking skills. Had she not taken the actions she did and so quickly, we'd be holding prayer vigils and funerals for devastated families and wondering why school personnel didn't act more quickly. You have the ability to reinstate Vivian Gutierrez. Don't let Lee County be a laughingstock on the national news tonight as the place to discipline the person who saved the school from a real shooter with a real-loaded gun with 16 bullets in it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. And if you could step forward and state your name.
Good morning. My name is Savannah Goodman. I have known Vivian since I was in elementary school and have continued to stay in touch through the years due to her loving character, willingness to help, and always her assistance, whether that may be a job reference, a tutor, or lending hand. It appears a lifetime of good character is being overlooked by one situation. With the information you have, I would urge you to look at this situation from all points of the from all points of view and understand who is telling the truth and who is not. Imagine you had a child or spouse in this school or any school building while someone had a gun and was shot and killed. Would you reconsider Vivian a hero for stopping you to lose a loved one? Vivian has the best intentions for her students and others, and always has. I urge you to ask other parents and spouses how they feel knowing their child and loved one was saved from a catastrophic event. There is no policy or proper in-person training as to what a teacher should do when faced with a student having a gun. That should be the real issue of the school board instead of demoting someone who saved lives. Thank you.
Next speaker, please make sure your card is in the basket and move forward and state your name.
My name is Donnaida Goodman. I am shocked to hear that with all the school shootings that have happened in our nation, that you are punishing Vivian Gutierrez for stopping a school shooting and saving the lives of every student and staff right here in our county. Will the parents of this school and their fellow school find out how you're going to how are you going to explain your decision? Vivian Gutierrez should be considered a hero for disarming a student who brought a loaded gun on campus. If you demote her, you will be causing every staff member to question what they would do in her shoes. Are they going to stop a school shooting and worry about getting demoted? Or don't stop it and maybe keep her job? She needs to be known as a hero for stopping a school shooting, not as an assistant principal, demoted for stopping a shooting. This is, there is no clear policy on what a teacher should do when a student comes into the classroom with a gun. For the safety of the students and the staff, there needs to be a clear policy. Numerous teachers have stated that they are not clear on what to do for this policy. Please reconsider your decision. Thank you.
Next speaker, please put your blue card in the basket.
My name is Laura Volenger. I'm shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harms Marsh Middle School, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. It's incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she is being punished. I know as a teacher in the building that day, I was able to go home to my family because of Vivian Gutierrez's actions. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district policy? Our schools have been trained for someone coming onto campus with a weapon, but not what to do if the weapon is in the hands of a student already on our campus. She acted swiftly and secured the weapon that turned out not to be a BB gun, as reported, but a real weapon. If you are stating policy as the reason for this demotion, then that policy needs to be clearly written. It needs to be taught and shared with all employees. Your decision sends a dangerous message to staff, students, and families that policy trumps saving lives. Respectfully, please reinstate Vivian Gutierrez as the Assistant Principal at Harms Marsh Middle School. It's the right thing to do. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you have your card in the basket, step forward and state your name.
Edith Benaruch. I am the Chairwoman of the Republican National Hispanic Assembly of Coleran, Lee County, and we are here in support of Vivian Gutierrez. I am outraged to find out that an assistant principal that prevented a shooting has been demoted. As a mom, I can tell you, I hope we have more Vivian Gutierrezes in the school system, people that are willing to risk their own lives to save the life of our children. You need to reinstate her, and I do believe respectfully she needs an apology. In this country, remember, as a voter, Lee County voters will be watching you, and I hope you do the right decision, because I know we will when the time comes. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Step forward and state your name.
My name is Jennifer Volenger. I've worked for Lee County School District for 20 years and have known Vivian Gutierrez for the last eight. I know her to be a person of integrity who would never willingly or recklessly cause or risk harm to any other person. In fact, she's gone out of her way for many years to be a positive influence in the community through her work with Alva Angels. I left Lee County School District recently after 20 years because I was frustrated with the layers of bureaucracy, and I think this might be an occasion where those layers have gotten in the way of decision-making rather than assisting. As a teacher, I know that sometimes students solve problems in a different way than I would have. If their solution path worked as it did in this situation, then I use their method as a learning opportunity to give them other solution paths in the future. Maybe district administration didn't agree with the exact actions Vivian took in this case, but in the absence of an unequivocal policy regarding inactive shooters, I ask that you use this as a learning opportunity and celebrate the excellent outcome. She should be reinstated so that other teachers and administrators are not afraid to take action in the future. Thank you.
Ma'am, if you put your card in the basket and state your name.
Thank you. My name is Tara Holmes. The school district of Lee County has reacted to their lack of policy in a most unreasonable manner. Vivian Gutierrez stopped a school shooting, and for her quick action and saving of lives, she's demoted? Why would this district choose to ignore their lack of policy and make her a scapegoat? Voters did not elect you to play politics over doing what is right, and in November, we will be voting for the candidates that support their staff and listen to the community. Vivian Gutierrez prevented Harms Marsh Middle School from being added to the list of school shootings in our nation. Reinstate Vivian Gutierrez for her former to her former position at Harms Marsh Middle and put policies in place to protect our kids. I will just finish with saying I myself am a teacher in this district, and I would not know what to do as a teacher because we are not specifically trained or told what to do when there is somebody in our room with a gun. We don't have a safe word. We don't have anything specifically told to us. Active shooter, sure. Somebody in my classroom kid comes to me and says, Ms. Holmes, so-and-so has a gun in their backpack?
Thank you. Please step forward and state your name.
My name's Adam Sanchez. As a parent of a student in the district, as an employee of the district, and someone that has known Vivian for over 40 years, I, I'm kind of saddened to hear that this is going on. I hope that the action I hope that the actions taken by the board do not deter somebody from doing the right thing. I believe that she did the right thing. Sometimes we don't have time to cross our Ts and dot our Is, but there are things that have to be done, and I believe that she did what she felt was best for her students and her teachers. I've heard from numerous people that are very thankful for her actions, and to have suspended her and keep her suspended, I, I just hope that the district does the right thing and reinstates her. Thank you.
Thank you. Please step forward and state your name.
I'm Karen Reese. An unjust decision has been made by the school district when they demoted Vivian Gutierrez after she stopped a school shooting. I ask you, where is the documented training of this administrator? Where is proof that Lee County School Board supporters, their staff by, supports their staff providing specific direction on expectations when a gun is suspected on campus? We have all seen the board policies in which your staff has stated he botched, he violated, yet none of them are relevant to this situation. This lack of dangerous and, dangerous will result in children being killed. Please advise your staff to stop trying to cover up this lack of policy with Sheriff's Department and take immediate action to rescind this demotion. Thank you.
Please step forward, put your blue card in the basket, and state your name.
Hello, my name is Delphina Yost, and I worked with Vivian at Eastlake County High School in the administrative office. I had the opportunity of observing her in action as she dealt with the day-to-day duties of handling students as they were going throughout their day. There were behavior issues, and then there were also other issues, personal, maybe not feeling well and so forth. She always maintained a very professional attitude. She was always very kind and very caring. I truly enjoyed working with her. The environment that we exist in today unfortunately calls us to have a different type of training as, in addition to being a good administrator. I, having worked for, for Lee County Schools, I know that I personally did not receive that training, and having been in law enforcement, I know that it was, it would have been very beneficial for our staff to have it in the event something were to happen. As we see what has happened, Vivian did the right thing. She's a person who has integrity, high ethics, and she is hardworking. She's reliable, she's efficient, and she's the kind of person that I would want our teachers and our staff to.
Time, ma'am. Thank you. Please step forward, put your blue card in the basket, step forward and state your name.
My name's Hector Gutierrez. I'm Vivian's husband, and I, I'm not here to tell you why she should be reinstated. I kind of want you guys to know who Vivian is. She's a giver. Right from the beginning, when we first met, she was babysitting, and, and one man is not fast enough, but I'm going to try to get, make it fast. When we first met, she was babysitting, and this kid was, was brought to us, do you guys want to adopt it? We was going to, to a foster home. By the way, my wife, Vivian, said she'll, she'll take it, and we got married and adopted the kid. We adopted the other one, and we have our own kids. Okay, going from there, she went to Alva Elementary, and she, she did this, she did the fundraisers over there, which all the kids absolutely loved and, and enjoyed. So there she went to high school. Even at middle school, the, the twelve kids, they all loved Haley and Vivian, and she, she.
Thank you, sir. Time. At this time, next speaker, please put your card in the basket and step forward and state your name.
Hi, my name is Stephen Smith, and I'm here to speak on behalf of Vivian Gutierrez. It's my understanding that Vivian heard of a potential threat. She responded to that potential threat. She took that potential threat away from the possibility of harming other students. As soon as she found that the potential threat was a real threat, the SRO was notified in a very timely manner. I think the actions of Vivian Gutierrez saved lives that day, and I do not think that she needs to be punished for saving lives. Thank you.
Thank you. Ma'am, if you can put your card in the basket and then step forward and state your name.
Hello, my name is Cindy Smith, and I've known Vivian for over twenty years. I know her to be a model citizen and a very strong leader. Beyond her years of dedication to Lee County Schools, she has created and supported a not-for-profit called Alva Angels, which supported in-needs children for many years during the holiday season. Her dedication to the care and protection of the children of Southwest Florida is unwavering and unquestionable. I worked with Vivian, and my children were in school in her care. I know in my heart her to be a person of the utmost moral and ethical conduct. As a grandparent guiding my grandchildren, our family's third-generation educated by the Lee County School System, I beg you to continue to protect our children and their educational leaders. Respectfully, please reconsider your decision and return Vivian Gutierrez to her position at Harns Marsh School immediately. Thank you very much.
Ma'am, you have a comment. Please step forward, put your blue card in the basket, and state your name.
Hi, I'm Jessica Gutierrez. I'm Vivian's eldest daughter. I'm the one that was spoken about and the, by the young man, Hector. This, my mother is a very well-respected woman in the school district. Like, she had, I give her props for everything that she has done in this whole entire situation. Me being, now being a corrections officer, I support her in everything that she has done in this whole situation. I could have lost her that day, and for everything that has gone down between December and now has really upset me. I, I beg you, please, please give my mom back her job. She has been a very big pillar in everything that she has done for Harns Marsh, Eastlake, and whatever other school that she has been at. Please, please.
Thank you, ma'am. It's time. Mrs. Johnson, is there anyone else in the chambers waiting to speak?
There is not.
Thank you. At this time, Madam Chair, we have time to move forward with the emails. Shall I go forward with the emails? Yes. Thank you. The emails will be read in the order that they were received. Eric Engelhardt, one. What and if Lee County Commissioners federal money of one hundred and thirty-five million dollars for coronavirus money is going to be sent to Lee County Schools? A, and if it receives this money, how will it be spent, as it is required by law, to be spent only on coronavirus problems? Two, what and if Lee County School Board getting or applying for federal monies for coronavirus monies? A, what will Lee County School Board be doing specifically for this money to coronavirus? Three, final, exactly how much of these monies will be spent in Lee High Acres, which is the most needy of all school districts? C, I'm looking for exact numbers down to the penny on Lee High Acres. Capitalize, no ballpark numbers, uncap. In closing, this must, and I mean must be in language that a tenth grader can understand. No legal or, and I will not say the profanity, is allowed. Madam Chair, these are emails that were submitted by the following individuals. Juliette Long, Jamie Underwood, Philip Gunther, Corey Schaefer, Megan Gutierrez, Erica Peterson, Carol Benson, Mark Turner, Tara, Frida Damon, and Anonymous. I am appalled to hear that Vivian Gutierrez is being reprimanded in any way for her actions regarding an armed student on the campus of Harns Marsh Middle School on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. It took a combination of compassion and courage for her to have been able to steer a potentially horrible incident into a peaceful outcome. Your actions give the perception that she is being punished for saving lives. The district should be proud that she prevented the school and district from becoming nationally infamous for allowing yet another school shooter to go unnoticed. I would respectfully request the district to offer praise of some sort to Vivian Gutierrez instead of a reprimand and immediately rescind the decision to demote and return her to the position of assistant principal at Harns Marsh Middle School. Madam Chair, this email has been sent by the following. Carleen Vandermark, Matthew Zrebrick, Erica Cisneros Gunther, Amy Fritsch, Barbie Mitchell, Janine Jordan, Nathan Mitchell, Kimberly Mitchell, Lori Watkins, Michael Massmeyer, Stacy Bishop, Nathan Mitchell, a concerned citizen, Erica Galagazza, Crystal Marsh, Alicia Duckwitz, Tina Lupo Schefter, Tany LaPierre, Jeff Tuscan, Maxine Benson, Tyler Ronge. I am shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle School, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision sends a dangerous message to school district staff, students, and families that she is being punished for saving lives. Is this truly in line with your goal of being a world-class school system? Respectfully, please reconsider your decision and return Vivian Gutierrez to her position at Harns Marsh Middle School immediately. From Stephen Smith. I am shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle School, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. Anyone that saves lives and prevents a casualty should be considered a hero, not punished. I would trust Ms. Gutierrez with my children or grandchildren anytime and all the time. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision sends a dangerous message to school district staff, students, and families that she is being punished for saving lives. Is this truly in line with your goal of being a world-class school system? Respectfully, please reconsider your decision and return Vivian Gutierrez to her position at Harns Marsh Middle School immediately. Dani Garcia. I am shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision sends a dangerous message to school district staff, student, and families that she is being punished for saving lives. Is this truly in line with your goal of being a world-class school system? Respectfully, please reconsider your decision and return Ms. Gutierrez to her position at Harns Marsh Middle. Carissa Smith. I am shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision sends a dangerous message to school district staff, students, and families that she is being punished for saving lives. Is this truly in line with the goal of being a world-class school system? Madam Chair, this is sent from Jenna Valdez, Anita Palmer, Lori Partridge. Vivian Gutierrez is a hero to this community, not only when she stopped a horrific tragedy at Harns Marsh Middle School, but through her work at Alva Angels. Alva Angels is a charitable organization based in Lee County that makes sure underprivileged families are provided for. Alva Angels provides food, clothing, gifts, and financial help to these families. Over the past twenty-five years, Vivian has helped hundreds of families and thousands of children. She again served countless families when she prevented a school shooting. Vivian Gutierrez needs to be put back in her assistant principal position at Harns Marsh Middle School. Cindy Smith. Vivian Gutierrez has been a model citizen and a strong leader. Beyond her many years of dedication to the Lee County Schools, she has created and supported a not-for-profit called Alva Angel for years. It provides for children in need during the holiday season. Her dedication to care and protection of the children of Southwest Florida is unwavering and unquestionable. I worked with Vivian for many years, and my children went to school in her care. I know in my heart her to be a person of the utmost moral and ethical conduct. I am shocked and embarrassed that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle School, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision sends a dangerous message to school district staff, students, and families that she is being punished for saving lives. Is this, is this truly in line with your goal of being a world-class school system? As a parent. Jennifer Boyle Lindger. I am horrified that after saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harns Marsh Middle School, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and will be demoted. I'm writing this letter as a former employee of Lee County who has known and worked with Vivian Gutierrez for the last eight years. I left the Lee County School District after twenty years of excellent service, sacrificing my professional contract and a significant portion of my salary because I no longer felt that Lee County had my back. The action that has been taken in this case shows me that I was right to be concerned and explains my, why my colleagues are leaving Lee County School District in droves. This also sends a powerful message to those teachers and administrators that they have not jumped ship yet. We put our lives on the line every day for our students and communities, and when we take bold actions to save lives, we should be hailed as heroes instead of being vilified and shamed. Danielle Hickman. Alva Angels is a local charitable organization that has served Lee County for twenty-five years. Vivian Gutierrez is the director and the sole reason that Alva Angels continues each year. She spends numerous hours and personal resources to make sure that families get food, presents, clothing, and financial assistance when they would otherwise go without. She has never received any money for her efforts and has never asked for anything in return. Vivian Gutierrez should be seen as the hero she is and put back into her assistant principal position at Harns Marsh Middle School. Email from Judy. Alva Angels is a local charitable organization that has served Lee County for twenty-five years. Vivian Gutierrez is the director and the sole reason that Alva Angels continues each year. She spends numerous hours and personal resources to make sure the families get food, presents, clothing, and financial assistance when they would otherwise go without. She has never received any money for her efforts and has never asked for anything in return. Vivian Gutierrez should be seen as the hero she is and put back into her assistant principal position at Harns Marsh Middle School. Thank you for your kind consideration in this regard. Laura Volenger. I am appalled to hear that Vivian Gutierrez is being reprimanded in any way for her actions regarding an armed student on the campus of Harns Marsh Middle School on December twentieth, two thousand nineteen. It took a combination of compassion and courage for her to have been able to steer a potentially horrible incident into a peaceful outcome. I was and still am a teacher at Harns Marsh Middle, and I know I was able to go home to my family due to her heroic actions that day. She has shown compassion to students and staff since I first taught with her when Harns Marsh Middle School opened its doors. since I first taught with her when Harons Marsh Middle School opened its doors. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your actions give the perception that she is being punished for saving lives. The district should be proud that she prevented the school and district from becoming nationally infamous for allowing yet another school shooter to go unnoticed. I would respectfully request the district to offer praise. Matthew Henshaw. I am completely shocked and embarrassed that after potentially saving staff and students from a school shooting at Harons Marsh Middle, while placing herself in harm's way, Vivian Gutierrez was suspended, investigated, and demoted. It is incomprehensible that instead of being recognized as a hero, she has been punished. Where is the proof that she acted outside of district guidelines or processes and procedures? Your decision to punish Ms. Gutierrez for her heroic and selfless act sends a dangerous message to school district staff, students, and family. Is this truly in line with your goal of being a world-class school system? Respectfully, please reconsider your decision and return Vivian Gutierrez to her position at Harons Marsh Middle School immediately. Kim Kenevki. My name is Kim Kenevki. I have three sons that graduated from Lee County Schools. My boys live with autism and have experienced bullying in their time in the Lee County School District. Most of the time, this was handled in a way that we were satisfied, especially given that there is a zero tolerance policy. However, I have read some things posted by parents on a community Facebook page and spoken with other parents that make me wonder if you are truly living up to your current policies. I'm writing to you today specifically regarding a situation I learned of recently. My understanding of the situation at Harons Marsh Middle School and Vivian Gutierrez does not lead me to support the disciplinary action taken following the December twentieth, two thousand nineteen episode. I am asking you to please help me understand why Ms. Gutierrez was demoted in response to her quick action in disarming a student and bringing the situation to a peaceful outcome. Is there something more to the story that should be shared with us? Undoubtedly, it took a combination. David Armstrong. I'm speaking as a student of a past school called NFMAA. I just wanted to let you guys know that the principal, Dr. Millions, have changed me and others while leaving a big impact on the school. Every day, he made sure to check up on his students, asking them if they are okay and if they need anything to ask him. Whenever a problem was brought to his attention with a student, he would always look deeper into it. If a student ended up having a personal problem, he'd do whatever he could to solve it. I can speak from experience. I lost my phone at school and when my dad called, he got up and drove to the school and helped me search for it. He has made sure to let a student know and the parents of the students know if they were succeeding really well. He was definitely one of the best principals I've ever known and I don't think I'll ever forget the things he did to help me and others. He gets things done with full effort and works hard for others. Truly a great mentor. Catherine Armstrong. Dr. Millions was my principal at the academy. In the short amount of time he was principal at the academy, he impacted many of the students. Every quarter, he would give a meeting to all grades and talk about how important it is to keep your GPA up and how it would benefit us in the long run. Then encouraged a lot of students to keep caring about their grades even if it was the end of the year. One thing that helped the meetings is how he shared some of his stories about when he went to school and how his schooling impacted things later on in his life. Some of the troubled students at the school changed how they acted due to his meetings and how he handled discipline. He has helped me through many personal times and has encouraged me to keep doing well in school. His connection with the students is phenomenal. Personally, in order to help me get a better experience out of my middle school years, he helped me with many of my problems I had faced. I don't doubt for a second that he will continue to make a great principal and help many other students for years to come. From Dawn Armstrong. Pine Island Elementary is getting the best. Congratulations and thank you, Dr. Millions, for everything you have done over the years at the academy. Although you will be greatly missed by the NFMAA family, your impact will be felt forever. Thank you, making my family's years there the best experience. Many of us watched the above and beyond things you did, such as driving to bus stops to make sure students rode the correct bus to school. We are all grateful for your support of the arts, your staff, and anyone part of the NFMAA family. I can say that my children appreciated looking out from the stage and you were always there. You are part of what made them want to be the best. Thank you from all of us. Congratulations on your next journey. I hope Pine Island Elementary understands the high caliber, reliable, dependable, and dedicated principal they are getting. Once again, thank you for everything and congratulations. Jacqueline Perez. On the agenda today, there is an item to ratify an agreement for purchase of a parcel in Cape Coral. Prior to the disposal of land, the board must approve a resolution declaring the property unnecessary for educational purposes. Please identify when this property, when this was properly done and produce the data. I recently submitted a complaint to the board and board attorney of the superintendent and chair pulling the board out of the sunshine. You have been informed previously of these violations and you continue to pull each other fully aware you are violating the law. In January, I wrote this board of my concerns of Harons Marsh. Your answer was to blame only one employee and not assume any responsibility for your failures. You failed to meet C.T., the educator that was informed by students of a student having a gun and he did not report it, or the professional who called her boyfriend to ask him what to do instead of reporting it immediately, administrators. Ron Pure. These are the times that try men's souls. The opening words of the series of pamphlets, The American Crisis by Thomas Paine in late seventeen seventy-six. Paine speaking to stir up revolutionary spirit in the colonies continues. The summer soldier and the sunshine patriot may, in this crisis, shrink from the service of his and her country. But he and she that stands it now deserves the love and thanks of man and woman. Now let's make a quick shift to front page article in today's news press. It heralds, Lee Health System Announces Plan for Workforce Reduction. No need getting into the gory details of what we're experiencing and will last long into our future. Thirty million unemployed as we approach thirty trillion in national debt. It's time to fire five hundred employees on the drop and replace with five hundred new employees. Lori Alhadef. On February fourteenth, two thousand eighteen, my daughter Alyssa Alhadef was shot ten times as she tried to learn in her English classroom at Marjorie Stoneman Douglas High School as she tried to learn. Alyssa was only fourteen years old. I wish someone stopped the shooter that horrific day. Mrs. Gutierrez stopped a school shooter and saved lives. She should not be demoted. She is a hero. I wish my Alyssa had a Mrs. Gutierrez the day she took her last breath in school. Madam Chair, that's the last of the emails.
Okay. At this time, I will thank the people who sent in, spoke or sent in emails regarding our COVID-nineteen pandemic. Mr. Engelhardt, someone will answer your email regarding federal dollars. At this point, I don't think we have any word that we are in receipt of that. Mrs. Perez, thank you for your comments regarding the parcel purchase, et cetera. For those who wrote in regarding Dr. Tom Millens and his tenure at North Fort Myers Academy for the Arts, we wholeheartedly agree and we are excited for Pine Island Elementary because they will be in receipt of an awesome leader. And we wish Dr. Millens the very best as he continues his career with Lee County Schools. Thanks to the eighteen people who spoke and the forty-six emails regarding Vivian Gutierrez. As a person who is trained by the National Office of Victims Assistance, a member of the Crisis Response Team, and who participated in Crisis Prevention Institute Training for Educators through the Lee County School District, I understand that our training needs to be expanded and that we also want to look at prevention and intervention and de-escalation. Crisis Prevention Institute Training is person-centered and focuses on PBIS and restorative practices which we now employ more in a growing manner in Lee County Schools. I know we have active shooter analysis training, which is something a little bit different than what allegedly happened at Harons Marsh Middle. As a board member, I will ask questions and look into this and try to get all of the information regarding the story so that we can make sure that we move forward in a manner consistent with protecting our students and supporting our staff. That's, that will be that. So. Next on the agenda is approval of consent action items. The documentation for action items listed under consent is made available to board members seven days prior to the board meeting. We are expected to review all the material and we have an opportunity to speak with the superintendent with any questions we may have regarding the recommendations. Some of these items have also been briefed or workshopped with the board in advance of appearing on the action agenda. Board members, are there any agenda items you wish to pull for discussion under the unfinished business table items portion of the agenda? Ms. Giovinelli.
Yeah, I have two. Mine is E-five and I-eight.
E-five and I-eight. Thank you. Ms. Patrica.
Thank you.
Mrs. Jordan.
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Gittens.
I have none. Thank you.
Ms. Vaughn.
I have none.
Mrs. Morgan.
I have none.
And I have none. Is there a motion to approve the agenda's consent action items with the exception of E-five and I-eight? Moved by Mrs. Vaughn. And seconded by Mrs. Gittens. Do you want me to repeat the motion? Mr. Pre Bruno wants you to repeat the motion. Thank you. I, I move to accept the consent action items except for E-five and I-eight. Thank you. And then Mrs. Gittens seconded that. Record your vote. Ms. Johnson.
Motion carries seven zero.
Motion carries seven zero. We have two polls to address. Dr. Atkins, will you please read your recommendation for E-five, the first pulled item?
Yes, Madam Chair. E-five is approval of Magnet Schools Assistant Program Grant. So the recommended action is approval of the Magnet Schools Assistant Grant, FY twenty twenty, evaluating contract with American Education Solutions, Inc. to provide grant application assistance at no cost to the district. And if grant funding is awarded, provide Magnet Grant evaluation services for the full duration of the grant project of five years in the amount of five hundred and eighty thousand.
Thank you very much. Is there a motion to approve the recommendation for the pulled item E-five? Ms. Giovinelli.
Okay, so I think this is where Ms. Patrica did so moved last week and I am in support of this. So I just, I wanted to bring that up. So I, I could do so moved. I just want to have a quick discussions that I am excited about the Magnet Grant and I hope to see more Magnet Grants because I think this is money that we're tapping in on and we're going to need for the future of our new budget, so.
Okay, yes, Ms. Giovinelli, but we need a second for that item E-five, the Magnet Schools Grant. Is there a second, board members? Seconded by Mrs. Vaughn. Now, discussion, please.
I want to make sure it's clear that Ms. Giovinelli, you made the motion. Because I think you had a discussion, not necessarily make the motion. So maybe just for the record, let's go ahead and make the motion and then we can have the second.
Okay, so I so moved to the superintendent's recommendation and.
Okay, and then Ms. Vaughn seconded, so now we can have discussion. Please unmute. Mrs. Giovinelli.
Okay, sorry. So yes, I am in support of the motion and the superintendent's recommendation. I am excited about the Magnet Grant and I'm hopeful for many more to come. How's that? Thank you.
Thank you. Any other discussion, board members? At this time, all in favor of supporting the superintendent's recommendation for E-five, the Magnet Grant, Magnet Schools Grant, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Aye, okay. Any opposed, like sign? Okay, motion carries seven zero. Dr. Atkins, please read your recommendation for pulled item I-eight.
Yes, Madam Chair. I-eight, ratification of the agreement with Maria Beatriz Martinez Seguero for the purchase of a parcel of land, fourteen zero two Northeast First Place, Cape Coral, Florida. So this is a recommended action recommending disposal of vacant parcel on fourteen zero two Northeast First Place and ratification of the said agreement.
Thank you. Is there a motion for the recommendation for pulled item I-eight, the sale of the land parcel in northeast Cape Coral? A motion for the pulled, yes, Ms. Morgan, thank you.
I move. I move for ratification of the agreement with Maria Beatriz Martinez Seguero to purchase a parcel of land at fourteen oh two Northeast First Place, Cape Coral, Florida.
Thank you. And do I hear a second for that motion? And seconded by Ms. Jordan. Now, is there any discussion? Yes, Ms. Giovinelli.
So actually, I only had one quick question and now I have two. But when is this actually set to close? Is it sixty days from today from the ratification or sixty days? Within the sixty days and now it will, it will, it will close like as soon as, once it's ratified now, it will close immediately? That wasn't clear. Do we know?
I don't know off the top of my head. I can see if Dr. Savage is available. Maybe he knows. If not, I can certainly get you that information.
Yeah, I'm not, and so I want to be clear too, I'm not opposed to the ratification or the selling, the selling of the property. But now is, and the other question that we'll need to know, I am curious about, do we need, and this may be attorney question, do we need to have this resolution declaring the property unnecessary for educational purposes? Do we need to have that? Do we know to sell it?
I see Dr. Savage there. I think he wants to answer your question.
Thank you.
Hello, Ms. Giovinelli. I'm happy to answer both questions. Yes, to answer your first question, yes, for sixty day, this is the piece that puts it in front of you. Basically, makes it so that we have a survey prepared. So essentially, which date stamped with today. So this is both this item specifically acts as a board's recognition that it is able to proceed to that for that particular sale. It declares it, it declares it that is no longer educationally appropriate by virtue of your decision today. So we have the staff documentation ready to move it forward pending approval of that item today. And yes, it is a sixty day sale that is within sixty days after the fact.
Okay, that's, that's all I had because that was not quite clear with the contract. So today is actually going to be the resolution declaring this the purpose is not a school, educational purposes or whatever. So, okay, great. I just wanted to make sure that that's covered. Thank you.
Thank you. Board members, any other discussion? Board members, any other discussion? Okay, seeing none, then all in favor to support Dr. Atkins' recommendation for the land parcel resolution, I8, please, please indicate by saying aye.
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 Okay. Also on our agenda is a motion made at the May 5th, 2020, regular board meeting by Mrs. Gittens and seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli to approve the School District of Lee County, provide the opportunity for parents, students, and community members to use in cooperation the use of their respective high school football fields during the first and second weeks of June for graduation ceremony. The main motion was tabled. Is there a motion to remove the main motion from the table? Okay, I'm sorry, Ms. Can you hear me? Yes, I can hear you. Okay. Could you please repeat what? You just removed the whole thing or? Okay. There's a motion made.
To pull it.
Right. It to table it, the, the main motion to provide the opportunity for parents, students, and community members to use in cooperation their respective high school field, football fields during the first and second weeks of June for graduation ceremonies. This main motion was tabled. Is there a motion to remove the main motion from the table? Yes, I'll make the motion to remove. Okay, moved by Mrs. Gittens. And is there a second? Seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli?
I second it.
Okay.
Because otherwise it would die, I believe. That's, it would die as of today. Yes, the attorney is saying that, so yes.
From our workshop yesterday, anyway, it was already dead, so... I'm sorry, is there a discussion? Okay, then if there's no discussion, all those in favor of the main motion that was originally made on May 5th and tabled, to support that, all those in favor, please? Ms. Johnson?
We need a motion and a second.
Yes, motion by Mrs. Gittens and a second by Mrs. Giovinelli. I can't hear you.
Ms. Fisher, there's a motion now on the floor to remove the tabled item. We need to vote on that first. We can't go to the main motion until the majority votes to remove.
Right, so we have, right, so we have a motion from Mrs. Gittens, seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli.
And then we need the, the discussion and the vote.
Okay. And, and we had no discussion, so I'm taking the vote to remove the main motion from the table.
Just to be clear, this is not voting, I'm sorry, if I may ask a question, point of information through the chair?
Yes.
This is not voting on the underlying motion. This is simply the motion to remove it from the table, correct?
Right, exactly. Right. All those in favor of removing the main motion from the table? Please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any, okay, and any opposed, like sign? Mrs. Giovinelli, are you an aye? Okay. And Ms. Patrica? Is an aye. Ms. Jordan, an aye. Okay. Ms. Gittens?
Yes, yes.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Vaughn?
Yes.
And Ms. Morgan?
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, motion carries 7-0. This motion is now on the floor. It's off the table and on the floor. Is there any discussion? Ms. Vaughn?
Well, I, I believe that yesterday at our, our workshop, Mr., who was it? Mr. Simmons talked about this. Was it Mr. Simmons, wasn't it?
Yes.
Yes. And, and I, and I believe that from everything that he said, it really was a no-go for various reasons, which I weren't with he. And he said that he had contacted the, the lady that Ms. Gittens had, was representing here at, at the board a couple of weeks ago and it was my understanding that she understood the various liabilities and, and various problems. So, I, I would stay, I, I would be voting against the idea of having, opening individual football fields for graduations.
Okay, any other discussion, board members? Seeing none, I'll take a vote. All those in favor of the main motion that was originally made on May 5th? If you're in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, if our word indicates nay, if you don't.
Nay.
Don't we need a second and a motion and a second?
I think, I think there was already, if I remember correctly, that main motion is already on the floor.
Right.
It's already... We need a motion to move it from the table and a second and a vote and then one for the recommendation is my understanding.
We already had the vote on to bring it back to the floor. It was already removed from the table, so now we're going back to the main motion. And the chair already requested, basically we had a discussion on that main motion because it's already pending on the floor.
Right. I'm sorry, you're correct. Thank you. I apologize.
Okay. All right, so then, motion fails 7-0. Next on the agenda is attorney's recommendation. Approval of the appointment of a citizen member to the Value Adjustment Board. Mr. Dupree Bruno?
Thank you, Madam Chair. We make the recommendation that we appoint Charles Gunkust as the citizen member representative to the Value Adjustment Board.
Okay, you've heard the attorney's recommendation that the board approve the appointment of Charles Gunkust as the citizen member representative to the Value Adjustment Board. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Moved by Mrs. Morgan and seconded by Mrs. Giovinelli. Any discussion?
I move.
Thank you. I was just going to say some...
I move the approval of the appointment of a citizen member to the Value Adjustment Board.
And I second her motion.
Okay, then any discussion besides?
Mr. Charles has been on here for quite some years and he's very much aware of what is, takes place. So, I think he's a great...
Yes. Yeah, I, yeah, I think he's been the representative as long as I've been on the board. Yes, and he does a great job. So, okay, um, if, then if there's no further discussion, please record your vote.
No.
You'll have to do a verbal vote. This item is marked as consent, so you guys cannot vote on it. Now you'll have to do a verbal vote.
Oh, a verbal vote. Okay, in that case, then all in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, but motion carries 7-0.
Madam Chair?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah, just one item from the consent agenda that I wanted to recognize. We didn't do administrative appointments and transfers, so I wanted to recognize three individuals. First is Candace Messenger, Food and Nutrition Services. She is our new director.
Yes.
Effective 5/27. And then we had two transfers. One of them came up in public comment tonight. Dr. Millens is moving from Norfolk Myers Academy as principal to principal of Pine Island Elementary School. And second is Mr. Velardi, who is currently the principal at the Sanibel School. He's going to be moving and taking over the helm at Diplomat Elementary Schools as the principal. So, congratulations to those three individuals. Thank you.
Absolutely. They'll all do a great job. Thank you. And should we mention that we have a number of retirees and we wish them the very best in the future? Luthiel Meyer from Buckingham, Exceptional Center, Kelly Maniscalco from Cypress Lake Middle, Mara Vertrees from Diplomat Elementary, Joe Patur from the Lee Virtual School, John Drake from Norfolk Myers High, Stephen Hook from Pine Island Elementary, Mike Carson from Three Oaks Middle, and Genie LaFountain from Title One. Good luck to you all as you turn each into the next chapter in your lives. Thank you. Okay. Moving on to other business. Thank you, Dr. Atkins. Board members, comments and reports. Let's switch it up a little bit and start with Ms. Morgan.
Okay, I did send you an email on the early childhood project that I am responsible for. I emailed it to you because there's a document attached that I think you might find interesting and I'm not going to reiterate everything that was in the email. I, I do want to talk a little bit about the CSI meeting that we had this past week. We had Courtney Black, Jamie Van Cleve, Samantha Howard, representing teachers at all three levels, Rob Cooper, and Robert Butts, representing principals, talking about sort of some takeaways from the virtual learning that, that has been going on. So, I'm just going to give you a couple of things that they've mentioned and I will write up a more formal report at another time. But Courtney Black, talking about her fifth grade class, said approximately 30% of her kids are flourishing. She said 50% are sporadic and 20%, 20% are struggling to engage and teachers and staff are, she's reaching out as, as is staff. The challenges all of them cited were student engagement, lack of importance of school at home, monolinguals. They all talked about being aware that there was an increase in mental health issues at home, or at least their awareness of those mental health issues. Samantha Howard talked about how difficult it is to do the extracurriculars like art when you don't have materials and you sort of have to wing it in terms of what's available in the home for, for doing some of the extracurriculars. They all commented that teachers are being over-accessed. People are calling teachers 24 hours a day, seven days a week. There does not seem to be an understanding that, that the teachers have a need for personal At the high school, Mr. Butts said that the biggest problem, one of the problems that they're having is that when you have eight teachers and they all have their own schedules, sometimes it's difficult for students to access teachers. So, coordinating schedules among teachers has been a real problem at the high school And then one other comment, students say they're working more and harder and teachers say they're working less. So, there you go. Positives. Everybody thought that the use of technology was, was, was stretching skill levels in a good way for teachers and for kids, that people were learning to, to, to use the new tools and it was expanding learning opportunities and people, particularly teachers, were learning about what kids can learn using some of these tools. So, that was positive. They were very positive about the electives and how they are supporting the regular classroom work. They said a really good thing is that students are learning to manage their time. There's no telling them what to do and when, they've got to figure it out for themselves. And at, at, I can't remember, I have to go back to my notes, but I can't remember if it's high school or what level talked about. They're doing more collaboration amongst themselves and I think it may, may have been the high school because of the scheduling problems. So, I just thought it was a really interesting meeting and if you want to sort of get the nitty-gritty from the meeting, just, you know, log on to CSI, our May meeting and you'll get a chance to hear all of the comments. So, but I thought you'd find that interesting. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. That was very good. Excellent.
Okay, first thing, I would like to thank Ms. Morgan for her report, you know, I find it very, very interesting to hear from the teachers' point of view, the principals and the kids, because I have only two grandchildren to hear, hear from and one's middle school and one is high school and of course, my daughter. So, it's, it's really interesting to see the cross-section. I know that different, that kids like my grandson, who's, who's a rock eighth grader, really misses not having, he misses his teacher, his teachers. He misses not having somebody next to him. And as, as a district, I know that we're going to have to, should this, should this go on, hopefully not, but should it, should it go on or should in the future, we have to go back to this, that, you know, where, that we learn from what's happened now and it's, you know, just find other ways to engage some of these kids that have had such difficulty when they don't have someone at their side all, all the time to, to help. The other thing is, and I know Ms. Gittens had a question yesterday about the census liaison. Do you want to just wait until it's her turn or since I'm, I've been the liaison to the census, do you want to deal with that now or?
I mean, if you have something to say about that, you, you can go right ahead.
Oh, okay, okay. So, what I'm going to say to clarify on, on the census liaison from the school district, that the comment that was made yesterday about, you know, whatever the board feels is, is right on this, the comment that was made yesterday that Ms. Gittens wanted to be the census liaison from the school district, quote, said Betsy wasn't doing it anymore. I'll be honest, I took a little offense to that because it almost sounded like Betsy's just not doing it and she's done with it or, or whatever. What I want to remind everyone of to clarify it, and I tried to do this as we went along in February, in March, because I know there were some people in the community that were pointing fingers at the school district and saying, well, we're not doing enough and the term boots on the ground was used a lot. the term boots on the ground was used a lot. That was never the role of the school district. I started doing this for the census right in the very beginning, like half ago, I guess. And we did, I think, a really good job with the support of getting the job information out from HR, academic services. Dr. Spiro really helped with getting information into the classrooms. Lancaster and Communication Department. You remember, they developed a really cool video, and they developed some personal, you know, customized from the school district, getting the message out about how much the school district and other other entities were important for the well-being of our community. So our role as a school district was never meant beyond, you know, well, April first wasn't a deadline. April first was official census day. But our role as an educator to get the information into the classrooms, et cetera, really was never meant to go much beyond April. Starting before April first, we had groups, like Ms. Gittens says, she's done a wonderful job in acres, and you'll recall as a board that I sent out, as we were getting closer to the April first date, that I sent out information to all of you that this was the time that community organizations with the boots on the ground were organizing. And I suggested that anybody who was interested in picking this up, that I could help them out, because I have lots of contacts that that I knew that could help them find groups. That that was the time that we should move to we as individuals, all of us as individuals, should move into the community efforts. You know, we can't, as a school district, we can't say, hey, teachers, hey, bus drivers, hey, you know, many different staff members, you, you need to do this to, I mean, we, we can't do that. We can urge them to do it. Hopefully, does all of that make sense to everyone? So I guess what I'm saying is, and it's up I feel like, it's not like I'm done doing this. I'm tired of it. I never saw the function of the school district to be anything but about mid-April. And then really, the boots on the ground, community efforts would take over. So it's up to, you know, whatever the board thinks, if we need to maintain the role. So that's, that's what I have to say about that. And really, those are my only other comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vaughn. Appreciate that. Ms. Gittens.
Okay, thank you very much. It was, I have some things to say that was not the order, but I will go ahead and talk about the census. Ms. Vaughn, I guess your understanding was that in April it was done, as you mentioned to me in a conversation. I know, because I've talked with several people in the county and then the region and all as well, wondering, are we going to do anything else as a school district? There are things that we could do, still do as a district, and especially considering the COVID situation that makes it harder to contact individuals and to spread the word about the census. It's something that will really help and touch all of us and not just the county, but the nation. It is very important, and especially considering our current economic situation. I would think that we would want to do as much as possible to get more funding when we're not sure what's going to happen with funding. And if that means getting the word out to, you know, a hundred or two hundred or three hundred more people in an area to get us more funding, to me, it just seems like a no-brainer. And as she said, I do continue to work for the area out here in the East Zone. And I will continue to do that. And if you feel that we as a school district are done, then what can I say? I asked that I would be able to do that. When we had the selection of the person, the liaison, the thought was that because Ms. Vaughn isn't doing anything involved in anything else right now, was what I heard. So maybe I misunderstood. And if that's the case, and she's still doing it, of course, I will just drop out of asking that question. So can we bring that forward and ask Ms. Vaughn? Is that what you're saying?
Ms. Vaughn? Yeah, just, just in reply, I want to make it really, really clear that I know, and I've known all along from my efforts throughout the last year, how important the census is. So I don't want to put anything like that out there, that Ms. Vaughn's done with it. She has no, you know, I'm, you know, I'm very, very honest about that. Again, it was my understanding that our role was education. And I realized that with the COVID nineteen situation, it makes things that much more difficult. And I'll tell you, one of the reasons that I didn't push it farther is that I felt that staff and the parents and the kids, they had enough stuff coming through Chromebooks and every, and everywhere else. And it was about that time that I started seeing commercials on TV. And so, you know, I said that I was going to be, I'm going to be the liaison to the COVID the opening task force. Somebody else feels that they would like to continue as that liaison. Be my guest on, on that, if you think that there's more that we can do, or, you know, maybe we should ask Dr. Atkins, because I can tell you that every step, except for going to meetings, I went to a lot of community meetings in the beginning and shared what we were doing. And that phase is done. Aside from that, moving forward, it really is staff that that does all the work in in creating the different pieces. So well, what I say to that.
Okay. I was not intending to put any extra work on staff. There are things that we can do, but like I said, I'm not going to discuss it any further. It was a suggestion to help the thing. And yes, there are commercials. There are things that are out there. But they're also, they're still recruiting for jobs. And we have people that may be laid off in the future. And there are things that we can do as a district to help our community. But if the board feels that we don't want to be involved in that, and I am not blaming you or casting any shade on you, Ms. Vaughn, I am just saying, it was my request to continue on doing some things. I see that there is not an appetite to do that, so I will drop that conversation.
Open to whatever the board thinks that they want to do. I feel like it's time for me, after probably a year and a half of doing that, to move on, especially since I've accepted another liaison position. So Ms. Fisher, is this something the board would like to do?
Well, yeah, why don't we just move on with our board member comments, and then we'll see how it ends. But thank you very much, Mrs. and Ms. Gittens. You still have comments?
Yes, I do. And I would actually like, can you just go ahead and take a consensus to see if there's any appetite at all to continue with the census through another liaison?
Okay.
We can just put it down.
So I have talked to a couple of people in the community who are continuing to work with the encouragement for people to fill out their census reports. Everybody counts. I constantly post it on my Facebook when I'm on there, which is not always that frequent. But I, I mean, I think that we have a, you know, a vehicle to share with people. We get to talk to a lot of people. So I would be fine if, Ms. Gittens, if you wanted to be out there and encouraging, yes, encouraging our staff and our students and their families to be counted. I think it's very important for this community, education, healthcare, and our infrastructure. So I would be in favor of that. And then, board members, is anyone opposed to Ms. Gittens working to encourage people to fill out their census reports? And can Ms. Johnson? I'm, oh, my gosh. Ms. Jordan?
I know this is public, I mean, this is member comment, so we're addressing this to you, Ms. Fisher. I guess my, my thing would be, why would Ms. Vaughn not just complete her task? She's already been doing it. I think that she should just see it through to the end versus putting someone in the middle of it, because we're all out there in our own communities doing individualized.
Yes, yes. And it's an individual choice. And I think Ms. Vaughn has indicated that she has taken on something else, and so she felt like her job was done. And that's, you know, it's all personal things. So I believe.
She said that her job was done. So if she believes that, I want to hear her say that her job is done, because what she said is that her job, she was not finished her job. This is continuous. So I want that to be said from her mouth.
Okay. And I heard Mrs. Vaughn, Ms. Vaughn say that if anyone else wanted to work with the census, that they could be her guests. So you know, I'm fine with whoever wants to work to encourage people to complete the census. That's, that's my, if I have a vote, that's my vote. But I think we need to move on. Okay, Ms. Gittens, you have other comments?
No, you know, but like I said, I will drop it. I will continue doing what I do for my community. Through the comments, basically, like everybody is on their own. And the, you know, the school district does not want to put forth any extra energy to do anything with it, not in a negative way. But I thank you for that, and I'll move on.
Ms., I just want to entertain Ms. Bruno for one minute. Ms. Bruno?
Madam Chair, I think you were in the process of trying to figure out what the board members' positions were.
Yes.
Moving forward. So we've heard from Ms. Jordan. I did see Ms. Jevonelli's hand go up, and I saw Ms. Vaughn's hand. So I think we need to clarify as to whether or not we want to move forward with having someone continue to represent the district with regards to a census project, or however you guys are doing that. I don't think it's very clear. Probably, probably need a motion.
Thank you very much, Ms. Bruno. Okay, Ms. Jevonelli.
I'm in support of someone else that wants to carry the torch on, you know. I understand what Ms. Vaughn was saying, but it did appear that she was done. And so if I, the census is not over, so if someone on our team wants to take that torch and continue it, I'm not opposed to that, because I think that's one more, one more count. That's one more person. That's one, you know. So I don't think we stop until it's over with, you know. I, I, I think Ms. Gittens plans on championing it a little differently, and I don't, I'm not opposed to that. So I'm, I'm in support of the team's decision. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, any other comments, board members? Ms. Morgan, then Ms. Patrica.
Yeah, I have no problem with a board member continuing to work on it. My concern is the strain on staff. I know that, and I want Dr. Atkins to respond, if he would please. I know that initially, a lot of work was done by staff. There was a lot of staff time diverted from other projects to get us up and rolling as far as advertising the census. I just want to feel confident that one, that staff is not doing anything, has no interest in doing anything, and that any requests that staff take on additional work with respect to the census go through Dr. Atkins.
Thank you. Dr. Atkins, do you want to respond to that, please?
Well, just in response, I would say that, yes, this is a time where we do have a lot of really pressing priorities. The pandemic response continues to be extremely large. Getting ready for reopening is another task that that we are now in the middle of, of really working on. And then, of course, there's the challenges with the budget, as we know. So that's, that's the biggest priority, as well as addressing some of the items in the strategic plan and the big five that we want to really get our momentum back there, because COVID took some of that away. Having said that, I would, I think we all support the census. You know, we have our website and so forth. So if there were things that were minimal, I don't think that would be a problem. But, you know, a major undertaking, I would be concerned about.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Patrica.
So I remember how this started. I came back from an NSBA conference where they talked about the upcoming census, and I came back to the table and reported and thought Ms. Vaughn would be great, because it's totally up her alley. This, you know, the, the activities of both Ms. Vaughn and Ms. Gittens have proven that it's completely up both of their alleys. This is the strength of the team. You guys have done a great job on this. I think from a more wide perspective, from Ms. Vaughn's perspective, district-wide, and then Ms. Gittens with individual community efforts. So I would really like for you guys to tell me, one or both of you, to tell me how you'd like us to proceed as a board in terms of supporting one or the other, or both. And then I, I just thank you for what you've done, and thank you for your willingness and desire to continue to do more for our community.
Thank you. Okay, back to Ms. Gittens.
Okay, Ms. Fisher, thank you, everyone, for your comments. I, like I said, I take it off the table. It is no longer a discussion. This is a good example, though, of not understanding someone's intentions and not asking, and not even finding out what it was that I wanted to do. I do realize that staff is taxed at this time with all that's going on. And I was not intending on creating another flyer or a whole video or anything. We've done that out here. There are smaller things that can be done. But I will remove the question from the table, and everyone can continue to work in their district. And I will move on with my comments at this time. When, I probably should have said this, when we had the vote to take the motion off the table for the graduation at the football fields, the, I did receive a letter that I was asked to, to read about that. And I will read it verbatim. I would like to thank you from the bottom of my heart for being my voice, and I couldn't have heard when I couldn't be heard for listening. This year has been one like no other, and now kids have to wait with the unknown once again, wasting money for a virtual ceremony that no one wants, and no promise for walking graduation. I don't feel like it mattered one way or the other. The parents, the seniors, I don't feel like it mattered one way or the other. The parents, the seniors, wanted their minds, wanted it. They made their minds up, and no matter how much they say, and had input from parents and seniors, I know, I know there is no way. I really appreciate all you've done and willing to see, only people, willing to see, the only people heard here are the seniors in the class of 2020. While a meeting was promised from the superintendent, that clearly did not happen, only a call from Mr. Clayton. I knew him, I knew him stating he was for, he was for, I'm sorry, I missed that, and that it would unfortunately never happen. Mr. Clayton was very nice and listened to what I had to say, but also informed me that nothing I said mattered. I had a good fight. I feel it has been done in a very unfair and one-way street. I will be moving forward with my life and praying that the future for my next daughter will have a much better fighting chance since she is returning to Lee County in the fall. I have faith things can and will change to do what's best for kids and not for people with no heart. Have a blessed night, and I'll be praying for the class of 2020. They, and hope they all know I gave it my all with my wish and voice. Could have truly been heard anyway." I promise that I would at least read her comments. Now to my comments. First of all, I requested on the weekend in an email to the superintendent, the chair, attorney, and the chief of staff that we address the situation with Ms. Gutierrez by being transparent and making a statement to the public that was informative as to the process, not details. Where we are in the process, what is the process, and that so that they would feel that they were not being ignored. Our new policy discussed today, for example, the timeline in the organizational chart is an example of how we can inform the public that this is what our process is. You're not being ignored. This is what we are doing. This is how we're handling the situation. Negativity and ignoring it does not diffuse the situation. And by the way, no one responded to my email. Next, number two. I feel that we owe Carol Cook and FSBA an apology for the embarrassing situation yesterday's workshop. One of the main issues we continue to speak about is lack of communication in which every board member is involved. We still did not get an answer as to who and why Ms. Cook was invited at the last minute to facilitate a workshop, and that the agenda was changed that everybody seemingly believed was to be in place. I can only assume the purpose was to control the direction of the evaluations of the board and the superintendent. Even though I was admonished during the meeting to that my actions speak louder than my words, I personally am not on a course to remove the superintendent. And if Chair Fisher said she didn't understand what happened, then the question again is, who on the board invited and directed Ms. Cook to act in that direction? The apology should come from that individual to everyone for their own changing the direction of an official, publicized board event. As I stated in the last action meeting, this is my next point, and I'm sorry. Phone is going off. It'll stop for a minute. As I stated in the last action meeting, I will be here for two and a half more years, and I may never win a vote, but I will provide awareness to the community. I guess the board took me at my word. I remain amazed that the board deems that I am not qualified to hold positions or requests that I have for this board. I've been told, well, you were the chair, but I was not aware that being elected the chair for one year would preclude me to be not involved for the next three years. Chair Fisher has stated recently in a selection process that we should consider inclusion of all members. Yet one member is vice chair, legislative liaison, FSBA representative, finance liaison, fair committee, et cetera. I clearly see that inclusion does not include me. Equity begins with each of you. I truly pray that maybe not during my tenure, but in the future, this board or a future board will truly realize that we have to be an example to students and the community of true equity and inclusion. Words like support, appreciate, trust, communication, and empowerment of each. And finally, on a very happy note, I want to congratulate the over 6,000 Lee County School District 2020 seniors. And a quick word to them is, this is not the end. You are only just beginning your future. Your choices, your goals, your decisions, choose wisely. Thank you. That's the end of my comments.
Thank you very much, Ms. Gittens. Okay, Ms. Jordan?
Thank you. I'd first like to welcome all the new hires in the operations department. They did a great presentation today for us, and I welcome them all. And also, last night, I had our last EDAC meeting, which was rather sad. And I thank them for everything. It's a great group of people. And at the end of that, they had the recommendation from the EDAC committee was to, when we do another survey that goes out to the teachers and students at the end of the year, that we would include diversity and inclusion questions on the survey, as well as whatever else we would add on there. And also, they would, the second recommendation is involve community leaders in community and communication process with parents. We had the luxury of having Mr. Adam Alloy join us. He's our community engagement person. And he has hit the ground running. I seen him in Lehigh at the census parade that Ms. Gittens held. He came and did a great presentation for the EDAC committee where he's looking at increase in public awareness, increase in community partnerships. And they really had a lot to share with him and look forward to working with him as I do as well. And congratulations to all the administration, especially Mr. Tom Millens. I'm going to miss him at Northrop Myers Academy of the Arts, and I know he'll do a great job for the families in Pine Island. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Jordan. Ms. Patrica?
Just have a few things. Madam Chair, if I may, revisit the issue of the Astero Education Task Force at our next workshop, because that's going to be a discussion, and I don't think any of us are in the mood for it right now. I'll bring it up during Good of the Order, if that's okay.
Yes.
For good cause, I should say. Anyways, the items I wanted to talk about, the Astero High School signs. We have, or we had individualized signs for each graduate placed outside Astero High School. Lining Williams Road, it was a really beautiful site, and I have to give kudos to Nick Bedos for making that happen. He, along with the rest of that council, truly support public education. And they, you know, you got to know Astero to know that this is a big deal. They allowed the signs to be placed in the right of way. And for Astero to even bend any of their aesthetic rules is really a big deal for the Village of Astero. So grateful to all of them for that effort, but particularly Nick Bedos. And the week before that, we had a car parade, and Ms. Morgan and Dr. Atkins both attended. It was Teacher Appreciation Week. And despite the fact that it was Teacher Appreciation Week, the teachers, Heather Morse in particular, organized a parade of teachers to thank the administrators. And I don't know that, I don't know that Principal Emile Beal will be super happy about me saying this, but he was weeping. He was so overcome with emotion to see the teachers coming through the line and thanking them for what they were doing, even though it was supposed to be Teacher Appreciation Week. It was fantastic. The people who went there, it was just fantastic to finally see people and to finally be around staff. And I have to say, one of my concerns about face-to-face graduations is kids hugging. And I saw Norm Haybauer, who I always hug, even though I never hug anybody, I always hug him. And I saw him, and we both had to stop ourselves from hugging each other. And at blankety-blank years old, I had to remind myself not to, you know, come into physical contact with him. I can imagine that younger people would have an even harder time controlling that emotion and excitement and seeing each other. FHSAA informational meeting was held, I want to say, last week, and we talked about six quarters a week for football players, meaning you could play, you know, two quarters of JV, four quarters of varsity, or four quarters JV, two quarters of varsity. That will be voted on at the June meeting. Were also, several of us asked for Executive Director Tomlin to bring forth a policy that will allow us to somehow regulate summer workouts. Because it's my understanding in Southwest Florida right now, we have private schools who are engaged in summer football workouts, but as you know, our facilities are closed and we cannot do that. So that is an equity issue, and that's really what the FHSAA is about, making sure that there's an even playing field. And it's not even if private schools are permitted to engage in that kind of thing and public schools are not. You guys are really excited to hear. I just got reappointed to the FHSAA board for three more years, so you get to hear these reports for three more years. And Dr. Atkins is super happy to hear that, at least quarterly, I will be bugging him about sports in Lee County. The final thing I want to talk about is Dave Crawford, the assistant principal at Orange River. Dave is a dear friend, and I was talking to him. One of the reasons why he's his dear friend is because he lets me talk about education all the time, and I love to talk about education. Anyways, we were talking about our kids. He's got six of them, four of whom are in our education system. Obviously, they're young. And he was talking about the struggle of being an assistant principal, his wife works, and having to facilitate his children's education for some period of every day. Unlike me, where I can put together a schedule for my four teenagers and say, "Do it, or I take away your electronics," right? Like, it's a different dynamic with little kids than it is with big kids. And what was really funny was, he said that he had wished that the DOE had ended the school year two weeks early because these little kids are just done, and the parents are just overwhelmed with trying to work and trying to keep their kids up and going. And I, with four teenagers, would prefer to have the DOE extend school through the entire summer because I have absolutely no idea what I'm going to do with my kids during a time of quarantine and phase one and all of that if I can't say, "Do your schoolwork from nine to four every day," right? So just different perspectives that I know Dr. Atkins and his staff are taking into consideration as we consider reopening schools in the fall. Those are my comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Patrica. Okay, moving right along to Mrs. Jevanelli.
Hi, thank you. Okay, I've actually received multiple multitude of outgoing and support on the behalf of the AP, and I'm very concerned in how we are conducting these investigations. I'm questioning the investigation process, and I have done so for FMTC and other employees, and I will continue to do that. As a governance board, we are responsible for our oversight of the processes and procedures and to ensure we are adhering to the state and federal statutes. I believe we have not been doing this. I am pleading with my fellow board members to acknowledge we have a serious problem here and allow for an outside investigation to be done and to guarantee that we're protecting our students and our employees to the best of our ability. So actually, today, I decided to make a motion to have an outside investigation or to conduct, and to conduct, an investigation, an outside investigator, excuse me, to conduct an investigation on the quality and the findings of the investigation to include all of that was involved, all employees that were and were not interviewed, and also include why the video was not viewed immediately. So should I reiterate my motion?
Please. And did you write it down, Jevanelli?
Yes, I did. So, but it's kind of chicken scratch because I did it just like a little while ago. So I have, I motioned to have an outside investigator to conduct an investigation on the quality and findings of the investigation of Harn's Marsh to include the investigation and process and policy of all involved, include all employees that were and were not in that investigation that we received, and why was the video not viewed immediately?
Okay, okay, so during our training the other day, I think we did come to an agreement that we would not make a motion when other board members have not had an opportunity, you know, to look at the information. But you're moving, that's a pretty complicated motion. So you're moving that we have outside investigation regarding the Gutierrez investigation?
Correct. To look at our policy and processes, I think that that's all I can do. We don't get involved in the personnel matters, and I'm not saying that. I want to have an outside investigator to conduct an investigation on the quality and findings of the investigation to include the process and policies that we have in place and also to interview employees that were and were not in the actual investigation that we received. And also, I have a question, why the video was not viewed immediately? So that was part of the investigation, I guess.
Right. And before I ask for a second, if I may, make a statement and then ask Ms. Dupree Bruno to weigh in because I think that with our internal auditor, RSM, that is one of the areas that is being looked at for policy and procedures, and I think that we're in process with that. So Ms. Bruno, could you comment on that just for a moment as how it might relate to this motion?
So with regards to the motion, she can bring up her motion. And if there's a second, then the motion, we can move forward with discussion and a vote. So the motion can be brought up. With regards to where we are in terms of the processes and investigation, basically, that's what we're doing right now. We're in the process of figuring out a better formula that will work and ensure due process rights for all of our employees. And RSM has been working on this for almost a year, and I know other individuals have also been working on this. When I started as the school board attorney, that was one of my priorities, and I have been working with RSM as well as the other members that have been drafting the ethics and education policy and hopefully the ethics and education policy, as well as the flow chart and how we will move forward to ensure due process for all of our employees will help mitigate, if not completely eliminate, situations and concerns that the public may have because of perceptions or perceived wrong. So that's what we're trying to do. Where Ms. Gutierrez is in the process right now, I cannot say just yet where she is because I don't have all of the information. If the board directs me to you, I can go back and kind of figure out where she is and come back and give a report. But that's basically all I have to report at this time, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. Okay, Ms. Jevanelli, yes?
And the reason why I even, this happened all in light of everything today and the speakers that came. I was not, this is not something I planned on doing, but I feel compelled that, I believe that, I know, well, obviously, we are in the middle of our processes and due process, but this particular investigation, I did read it, and I think that an outside eyes would be more beneficial. And it takes, actually, it takes the responsibility a little bit off of us and has somebody else look at it, that I think that would be an asset to the situation. And we, because, I mean, the community has spoken. She has a petition out there that is over 5,000. So I think we have to, we can't just, you have to listen to the people. We have to understand that that's what we're here for, to do that. And yes, we have processes, and there might be some issues with that, but let's let someone else tell us that, too. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Mrs. Jevanelli motioned that we have an outside investig- All right, Mrs. Giavanelle motioned that we have an outside investigator to investigate the Vivian Gutierrez investigation and answer those specific questions, including why the video was not immediately viewed. Is there a second? Okay. Is that a second? Please unmute, Ms. Gittens.
I have a question. I think we're kind of in the midst of all of it right now. I totally agree with the fact that we need to know where we go from here. I totally agree with the fact that something must happen. And as I stated, which seems to be overlooked, I stated that we should have something to say to the public or this will continue to just grow. I would, I think at this point, as Mr. Dupree Bruno mentioned, allowing her to go and gather information to know exactly where we're at to have a more sensitive statement to the public and inclusive in that they will understand we are not just sitting on our hands, that this is a major issue and that we do care. And everyone hears all the time, every time something happens, it's the board did this and the board did that. And yet, I continue to say, the board doesn't even know. It's just a word that's thrown out there. So we really need to get our cart in line with our horse, in line with everything else. And find out, where are we at this point? As I sent an email five days ago, that no one answered, that we need to figure out where we're at with this, come up with a statement that is rational and helpful to everyone and not derogatory to anybody. And then we can move forward. We have to let the community know that we are aware and that we do care. That it's a process in how we do it.
Thank you. Ms. Giavanelle?
So this is, the investigation was, is almost six months in the process. So I don't understand that. That's why I think an outside eyes looking at our investigation and our processes can eliminate what is going on. And I understand that we have, we're, we're in the middle of making that. But what does that do for the immediate, for the employee now, immediately? And I think that this needs to be addressed. It shouldn't be continued. And I think we can fix this. So I believe with an outside investigation, looking at our, how the investigations are being done would help, like I said, eliminate this issue that's going on right now. And because it's not going to stop. And we need to, we need to be able to be the best that we can be. And that's allowing somebody else to invest, look at the investigation process. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I understand that. Ms. Morgan?
I'm sorry, we're having a discussion. We've had no second?
Yes. Okay.
I'll second for the purpose of discussion, yes.
All right, we have a motion and a second for the purpose of discussion. Any further discussion, board members? Ms. Giavanelle?
My other concern is that we're, we are less than three months away for starting school and, and students will be back in the classroom. And where will we be then? What will be, what kind of training will have been done for the, for our staff? I mean, I think that this is an issue that should not wait. I think this is important. And I think we've been kicking the can down the road regarding our due process and what's gone on for over a year now. So I think we need to really take action instead of keep talking about it. We keep, we talk, we have no action.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Ms. Vaughn and then Patrica.
Well, I, I, I do agree with Mrs. Giavanelle that there are probably some issues that it would be of us to look at. But that said, from what I understand in the newspaper, I think there's, that there's going to be an action against the district. And I, I think that we would need to move very cautiously to look, to look at anything and not be, not premature. So, you know, I'm, I'm not sure that this would be in the best interest right now, the best interest of the school district.
Thank you, Ms. Vaughn, Ms. Patrica, and then Mrs. Bruno.
I was actually going to, part of my comments was to refer to Attorney Dupree Bruno to ask her the appropriateness of a public discussion regarding this.
Thank, thank you, Chair. So I do want to caution the board members with regards to delving too deeply into this discussion in terms of the facts and other things with regards to the investigation. We do want to be very, very careful. If the board is named as a party in this action, anything that the board members say can be construed as an admission by a party. So we want to be very, very careful because each one of you is a member of the board, which is the subject of the litigation. And then the second thing I want to caution is that, be very careful in discussing facts in this forum like this. That's why we have attorney-client sessions. Because what can also happen is you can turn into a witness that you did not realize that what you were discussing turns you into a witness and they call you on the stand. So we can have a discussion, but we need to be very, very careful with regards to what we say and about the facts and about the actual investigation. If this is a discussion just on the process, which we did today during the briefing, that's one thing. If we're going to discuss the actual facts and what happened in the investigation, that's something else.
Thank you, Attorney Dupree Bruno. I appreciate you giving me that advice now. And I also appreciate you giving it to me via telephone before our one o'clock meeting. And I believe that you reached out to each member of the board to give that advice. I'm not sure whether you reached each of us. But I, I'm, I'm following your advice and I am not talking about this. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Giavanelle, any further comments?
I'm not saying one thing way or another. I would just, I am with the outside, with an outside investigation, that helps us with the process that, and that, I'm not saying, and that clears us from, from our investigation. So I think that's all, I'm questioning the process. I'm not getting into anything to do with the employee at this point.
Okay, then we do have a motion on the floor in a second. And if there's further discussion, we'll take a vote.
Madam Chair, I saw Ms. Gittens hand up.
Ms. Gittens?
Thank you, Ms. Patrica. What I was going to say is, and, and Ms. Giavanelle, you can obviously see, we will not, there, there will not be a vote enough to do this. I'm suggesting that we table this or decide to have a attorney meeting about it. I just still think we need time to figure out as a board, through our attorney, if there is anything we should do at this point. Timing wise, as far as I know, it's the end of school. And anything that would happen to Ms. Gutierrez would happen at the beginning of school. So we do have some time. And the main thing I want to say is after listening to Attorney Dupree Bruno about the plan that is set up, that we're working on, that is supposed to be dovetailing with June the 30th, when we evaluate RSM. So I know they're working very, very diligently to get this process that would help situations like this to be in place. And I think we need to listen to get that in place because, because we don't have anything like that in place at this point, so.
Yes, Ms. Giavanelle?
So I am not willing to wait, have a risk of waiting till school starts or waiting any longer when the, I think the, the students are, and the safety of students is very important. So I, I, I have to think about tabling it because I, I, this is not the first time that I've questioned the process of investigations. In fact, I'm not the only person that's, and that is, and that has questioned that process. So this is, has to do with our process. This hasn't, doesn't have to do with this individual complete situation. So that's where I'm bringing that up, I'm bringing forward. This is, has to do with the process. So I, I'm not going to table it. It can die today, I guess, and I'll be the only one that votes again, votes for it.
All right, very, very much. Then in that case, at this point, I think I will call for the vote. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Can you please repeat the, the?
The motion? The motion, yeah. I motioned to have an outside investigator to conduct an investigation on the quality and findings of the investigation to include the process and policies and also to include why wasn't the video viewed timely? Or immediately is what I had initially. And to include all employees that were involved into the investigation. And I'll have to clear that up, but I will with Susan regardless later.
So motion in a second, I'll call for the, and we're finished discussion, I'll call for the vote. Favor say aye. Any opposed, like sign?
Can we, is this?
No, this is a vote, Ms. Gittens. Aye or nay?
I, I just feel we need to follow a process. It'll be done in June or before June. And we will get a thorough process.
Motion, motion fails, six to one. Thank you. Do you have any other comments, Ms. Giavanelle?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. I'm going to limit my comments. I'm just going to say that I know that since Parkland, we have had an increase in our safety and security efforts in this district to include threat assessment teams, mental health teams, training, mental health, first aid training. So I think this district has made an effort. We are very big. And, you know, I, I think that maybe it might be time to look at some other options as far as training for our school staff, which do not preclude something other than an active shooter. Some, and we did have a history of doing that in this district, as I mentioned before. And so I'm confident that we will continue working. And I think any, any further discussion, when there's an active investigation, should be had through our board attorney. So I was talking to someone at a kid parole meeting and we hear that domestic violence and child abuse reports are up now. And I was looking at our website, following a Child, Children's Minds Matter meeting. And our, under Student Services on our mental health website, are many opportunities for ABCs, for families, dealing with stressors, childhood trauma, child abuse places, references to places in this community to go for, for support. So suicide prevention and threat assessment information. So I want to again thank the people in our Student Services Department and our Counseling and Mental Health Department for their efforts in supporting families through this crisis. And I want to thank all of the staff for the work that they have done. I want to thank our board for our, all of our individual hard work and our efforts at building a stronger governance team. It's, it's an honor to serve with you. And, and yes, the census is important and every vote counts. So I think that any efforts, individual efforts are not going to be lost in the translation. And with that, I thank you all. Next on the agenda is board attorney's comments, Ms. Dupree Bruno.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to thank Staff Attorney Christine Schroed and Staff Attorney James Holloway and our Chief Legal Counsel, Brian Williams, who have agreed to join with me on a big venture to try to revamp our contracts process. The contracts approval as well as the contract drafting process. So I think that if we are able to really hone in on that process, we will be able to save quite a bit of staff time, attorney time, and make the district a little bit better with a clearer and cleaner process. So I want to thank those attorneys for jumping on board with me because this will be a massive undertaking to go through all of the contracts throughout all of the departments. I also wanted to thank Jennifer Schaefer, who has been holding my hands as I learned how to use Board Docs. And I wanted to thank Susan Johnson, who I can text and call and she can give me some assistance when needed. So I appreciate those staff members. And I especially want to thank Johanna Tortosa Ursley, who has, was my executive assistant, who literally has been holding my hands since day one and has made sure that I have onboarded properly and is constantly there. And I'm adding one more to her desk. And she says, "I have not worked this, haven't done this much in a long time." So I'm very excited to have her and I appreciate her. With regards, I just want to clarify one thing because I do know that this is a board priority. With regards to our disciplinary, employee discipline process, we are determined to work on that. We had our briefing today. I would ask the board members if they can please send me their questions that they have from the proposed policy and the flow chart within, if you can give it to me within 10 days. Even seven days would even be better. So that we can bring that back to the committee and be prepared to come back to the board. We do want to get, and I know that, I can speak for Dr. Atkins because I know that he wants to get this done as well because this has come up in our meetings. So I know that everybody has a vested interest to ensure that we have a process that really comports, promotes, protects employee due process rights. So I'm just coming on board, so bear with me as I go through that and we get that done. But that is a priority. So I do want the board members to know that. And that is it. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Mr. Dupree Bruno. Dr. Atkins? Please unmute.
Here we go, finally happened.
Okay, we hear you now.
All right. I just want to echo the comments of Ms. Dupree Bruno. I, I really think that, that we want to ensure that our process is not only objective, but also has the appearance of being objective to our public. And so we have certainly heard, I think, the comments of all of our board members. I can tell you that there has been a lot of hard work on this because as we started looking at it, we really, I think dug in deep to, to make sure our, our process was as best as possible. So I'm, I'm glad that our new board attorney is, is fully on board and, and has totally committed to this endeavor. I'm, I'm looking forward to continue to work with them as well as RSM because I think we're going to have a good process that you'll be, you'll be satisfied with. So having said that, I do, like all of us, I think, thank the, the speakers who came. That takes a lot of courage, as we know, to come forward and, and speak to us. And, and, you know, many of the comments were quite moving. So I just want to say that I appreciate them taking the time to do that. The graduation ceremonies, we, you know, we've got those signs that have been going out. So I, I do hear some positive chatter about that. We're seniors are getting their signs and putting them in their yards. So that's, that's a positive thing. The virtual graduation is coming up at the end of next month. And then the in-person graduation at the end of, end of July. And I'm very optimistic and hopeful that we will certainly do that. I have a number of people that, that I work with and people in my neighborhood who, who have. have seniors this year. So I, I hear about the desire to do it not only virtually, but also in person. So we really want to make that happen. So look forward to that. Finally, reopening and addressing really many, many, many questions that have come up as a result of reopening. You know, that is something that is, is really taking the lion's share of our efforts. It's going to be important for all of us to stay in communication about our reopening efforts. So I know that you will stay on top of me and making sure I'm communicating with you and I will commit to trying to do that because you're the eyes and ears in our community and I'll need your help to make sure that people, people know the steps that we're going through to reopen. We'll, we'll certainly work with the board and put a continued communication via our website and also the letters and stuff. For those things, we'll continue. But as we make decisions, it's going to be important for us to also get the, make the word, put the word out there and make people really understand the steps that we're going to go through because, you know, right now there's a lot of questions. We do have some guidance that's starting to come in, but as we move toward, out of phase one, hopefully to phase two soon, we can start to, to make those changes and, and hopefully look forward to seeing our students again in the fall. But we'll be communicating that out as we move forward. Last thing, again, appreciate yesterday, I thought, a lot of good feedback. I'm going to begin working on an action plan that I think is, is doing two things. One, it looks at our strategic plan and vision 2030 and, and the big five and provides an update as where we are relative to, you know, moving into the new school year, but then taking the opportunities that were provided yesterday for improvement and, and making sure that that gets layered into whatever action plan that we move forward, as well as maintaining the things that the board was very supportive of. And that's the end of my comments. Again, thank you for a good meeting.
Thank you very much. So on Monday, June 1st, there'll be a board workshop at 1:00 PM. On Tuesday, June 2nd, there'll be a briefing meeting at 1:00 PM, followed by an action meeting at 3:00 PM, as well as a special board meeting at 5:05 PM. So, and at this point, having no other business to come before this body, I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. Moved by Mrs. Jevanelli and seconded by Mrs. Jordan. All in favor? Okay. Please, please record your vote.
Okay, a voice poll. All in favor? Aye. This is adjourned. Thank you very much. Have a good night.
Aye.